Hello, everyone. Welcome to the October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one Select Board meeting, actually joint meeting tonight with the Planning Board. This is Select Board Chair Mark Strange. I'm going to be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Gold?
Here.
Tom LaCusa?
Here.
Steve Morantz and Josh Levine will not be joining us this evening. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
And members of the Planning Board, Walter Gunn?
Present.
Cheryl Thibodeau?
Here.
Don Holland?
Here.
Bruce Colton?
Here.
All right. Good to see you guys and gals.
Thank you.
This open meeting of Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely. It's in with Chapter Twenty of the Acts of two thousand twenty-one. This meeting is convening. A Zoom webinar is posted on the agenda and town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. This meeting will feature resident comments, resident comment, using the Zoom webinar format. Members of the public are attendees. If a member of the public would like to speak during resident comment, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelist, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual will be afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. First item on our agenda are Select Board announcements. Pondside Road and Tina Lane will be under construction starting on or about October fourth. So I'm assuming they've already started.
Yes, started last week.
Thank you. The work includes pavement reservicing and covert replacements. The construction will necessitate the closure of Pondside Road to vehicular traffic during certain phases of the work. More details are on the town website and will be distributed also via the town's social media accounts. We also have the grand opening of the new adult center. We're excited to announce a grand opening and ribbon cutting ceremony for the new adult center, which will be held Thursday, November fourth. Please join us at two eleven Beetham Road for a grand opening celebration, which will include a ribbon cutting ceremony, guided tours, and light refreshments. Regular adult center programming will begin at the new adult center on Friday, November fifth. I'm all very excited about that. Looking forward to seeing everybody there. Sorry about that. Hang on a second. Next up are the, is the Planning Board vacancy interviews. This evening we have two applicants. And first on the, on the list is Zach Veriden. Mike, can you bring Zach in?
All right, should be good.
Hey, Zach. How you doing? So thank you so much for submitting your application for the Planning Board vacancy, as we do with all the applicants. Just asking that you introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you're interested in joining the Planning Board.
Thank you for the opportunity and good evening all. I won't try to repeat much of what was already stated in the materials that I submitted, assuming that most folks had a chance to review that, though if you did not, please raise your hand and let me know, and I'm happy to go into greater detail. But civic engagement has been a large part of my career to date. And serving Long Meadow has something that has been very near and dear to my heart, and I've been fortunate enough to serve in a number of different roles and capacities in recent history. Hope to be able to do so on the Planning Board as well as a local leader who is very committed to excellence and equity within the town. I think it's important to have a diverse experience and diverse lens with an eye towards equity, particularly in light of the Select Board and town managers' decision to keep the implementation of the Coalition for Racial Justice Task Force recommendations at the forefront of their goals for the coming year. I think I would be uniquely positioned to help inform some of those planning decisions through that lens. And what isn't apparent from the materials that I submitted is that as a former educator who was charged with renovating many different schools and having them rezoned and having just quite literally an hour ago come out of a building committee meeting at the Springfield J C C where we were hoping to plan for serving the needs of the community that we serve at the J C C, I think I would also bring a planning lens through which to view all of those diverse experiences as I hope to continue to be able to serve Long Meadow in this capacity as well.
Thanks, Zach. Any Select Board members have questions for Zach? Yeah, Mark?
Thanks, thanks for applying. I don't know if I got a chance to ask you this a month or so ago, but this is an elected position. And so if, if you are appointed, would you see yourself running for reelection in the June town elections?
Yeah, I think it's a definite possibility. I'm excited to get on the Planning Board to learn more about what the needs are of the community. Is as someone who has run for office before in Long Meadow and considered whether or not to run and in fact decided not to run in some other races in town, it's really going to be, I think, a value judgment on whether or not I bring the right skills and perspectives for what the Planning Board needs at this moment in time. And, and I think this is a very unique opportunity that if it does in fact seem like there is a lot of value that I would add to the role over time, I think it's definitely something I would want to consider.
Thank you. Yeah, Tom?
Yeah, Zach, I just wanted to comment that I appreciate your sort of resilience, you know, that you feel like you still have a lot to offer the town and that you're running for this and you'd be willing to run for your office, you know, run for the Planning Board in the future. You know, it's, it's just important that we have residents who are willing to put in this kind of effort to make us the town that, that we are. And in your letter, you said that you did a search and you came up with Long Meadow. Was there something about the way we planned this community, well, not we, but over the generations, it's been planned that seemed really attractive to you?
Yeah, I think, well, I think I'll start with a couple of things that were, I think, ancillary benefits, and then I'll share what was the, this just driving decision point for our family and conducting our search. Some of the wonderful ancillary benefits was just how family friendly this community is, how there's been intentional planning around ensuring that the entire community is, has great schools, great parks, is mindful of the planning that it takes to achieve that and maintain that over time. I think we're all really important things to us. I think the driving decision point for us was the investment that the public schools have chosen to make in public education specifically as it relates to students with special needs. As we have a very complex little guy in our family who requires quite a bit of significant need, attention, and care in his educational process. Long Meadow was one of the few, few communities that fit a number of different boxes that we were looking for and chose to make the investment in students that require the additional resources to realize all of their potential.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Zach. Any Planning Board members with questions for Zach? Yeah, Don?
Hi, Zach. Thanks for applying for the position. One of the main issues that's going to be facing the Planning Board and the town is what to do with the property at the corner of Redfern and Williams Street. Are you familiar with that property?
I am. We live right around the corner.
What do you think should be placed in the application?
Yeah, well, I, I don't know that I have a specific preference in mind as we sit here. I do believe that what we have in, in front of us as a community is a pretty significant and unique opportunity to fundamentally alter the landscape in Long Meadow for generations to come. And so I think a lot of community voice, opinion, and gathering needs to inform where the Planning Board ultimately lands on making a recommendation.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Any other Planning Board members with questions?
This is Bruce Colton. I have a question. Are, are you aware that the rezoning or proposed rezoning of that property is going to be voted on at the town meeting in about two weeks?
Yes.
And are you aware that the Planning Board is recommended, after public hearing, recommended against the zone change?
I am aware of that, though it was my understanding, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, that if a developer or developers were to come forward with a more detailed plan, that the Planning Board would reconsider revisiting that vote.
Yes, that, that's essentially correct. Although if, if, if the plan is voted down, or the, not the plan, if the zone change is voted down at the town meeting, because the board voted against the rezoning it as business, no one could request it be zoned or rezoned as business for, for two years, although they would be able to come back with no time limit if they were going to rezone it as professional or some other proposed things. Which is why the, the petitioner might want to consider withdrawing their, their warrant article.
Any other questions for Zach? Very good, Zach. Thank you so much. We have another interview tonight, and then we'll be making a decision in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, our second applicant is, gentleman's name is Chris. I'm not even going to try to pronounce the last name. I'm sure we'll hear it soon enough. Can you bring Chris in, Mike?
Yep, Chris should be in now.
Good evening. Last name is LaJodry. I'll say it for you.
LaJodry?
Yes, correct.
Got it, got it. Well, welcome, Chris LaJodry. Thank you so much for putting your resume and application forward for the Planning Board vacancy. Just like we asked Zach, we asked all applicants, tell us a little bit about yourself and what draws you to the Planning Board.
Sure. So good evening and thank you for having me tonight. As I put kind of in my biography, I am a licensed architect by trade and I also work as a real estate developer. So I have a pretty unique sense, I think, in terms of development and architectural kind of appropriateness for sites and development. Obviously, I've been on the other side of the table presenting to Planning Boards a lot throughout Massachusetts, Connecticut, and New Jersey in my experience. So I think that lends a good lens to me on what Planning Boards are looking for and how to put public input into account into their decision-making process. I also did work as adjunct faculty in Connecticut community colleges. So I think I have a good way of explaining feedback to potential presenters and applicants to explain the process of the Planning Board zoning regulations and walking them through what's required of them to get their project or proposal through the plot, through the process.
That's great. Any Select Board members with questions for Chris? Mark Gold?
All right, thank you. Chris, I'm going to ask you the same question. It's, it's a, it's an elected position. Do you intend to run? Should this, should you be appointed, would you intend to run reelection coming to June town meeting, town election?
Sure. Yeah, I think certainly a possibility for sure. I'd be curious to see how the Planning Board functions in Long Meadow in particular, as I've never been in front of this board before compared to some other boards, assuming that, you know, it makes sense and that I'm bringing something of value. Based on my experience, I could certainly see running in the, in June.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, thank you for stepping forward for this, Chris. We have three buildings in town that I wonder if, you know, your view as an architect, that, if you've thought it all about. So we have a town hall that really only has access to the first floor. We have a meeting house that, there's some accessibility issues in that building. And then we have a third building at the Greenwood Center that was the adult center and now is going to be empty. And, you know, as an architect, do you, do you think the town, do you have any opinion on, on those challenges for future planning?
Yeah, certainly accessibility is something at the top of mind when planning any kind of retrofit for old, either old or historic buildings. Certainly always, you know, I also have a accreditation need, so sustainable building is certainly what I'm passionate about. So certainly preserving buildings to me is important versus, you know, tear down and building new using resources that you have is certainly the most sustainable approach, right? Reusing what we have versus creating new waste and new generating of new product. Some building, I only have personal experience with the town hall being in there, being with the building department. I don't know the other two buildings, in, inside, and out. Certainly has some challenges with old historic buildings and, you know, obviously the logical, easy solution is to put an elevator on the outside of the building, which is not, not ideal, right? So we're looking for more creative solutions on the interior of the building to maybe address some of those accessibility concerns.
Okay, thank you. Any Planning Board members with questions for Chris?
Oh, yes, I'll start with one. First of all, I'd like to ask a question for Chris. I guess I didn't see it somewhere here in the paperwork. How long you been a resident of Long Meadow?
It'll be six years in November.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's easy. Now, since you do work for developers and it's always been a concern on Planning Boards, do you feel that you might have conflicts of interest that would cause you to recuse yourself from decisions on Planning Board in Long Meadow? Or do you think you could be impartial and pretty much separate from your career opportunity or your career now? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think the only time I would perceive needing to recuse myself, obviously, was my company was proposing it in Long Meadow. It certainly would be a conflict of interest, but otherwise I feel I'd certainly be a real judge. And, you know, I am a developer, right? I'm about good development, not any development. It's got to be the right fit, the right topic, and the right need to make it move forward, not just develop for the sense of.
Okay, thank you. And you're also, I mean, you, you attend town meeting, I assume, and you realize that as a Planning Board member, we do go to town meetings. We, we go to special public hearings, so you're up for that task?
Correct. Yeah, I'm obviously attending them on the other side of the table now. So it would be just a different lens of the same meetings.
Okay, thank you.
This is Bruce Colton. Oh, I just wanted to say I, I only realized you had applied today, but I read your resume and your material and you are one of the best qualified people who has ever applied for the Planning Board in terms of your background. So I just wanted to congratulate you on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Thanks. Chris, we, we had a discussion of this a few months ago. I think it was, it may have even been about the skate park or something. But it's, it's about, you know, growth and change versus stayed old Long Meadow and steady as she goes, New England kind of, you know, architecture and things. What are you, what are your thoughts about those, those potential discussions and concerns?
Yeah, so certainly there are, I think times are certainly changing and the natural area of design is certainly something. I'm actually currently on my, my work side, going through a similar experience with the town of Enfield. We're closing, you know, some, we're working through the, they're going through their P O C, Community Development, update for every ten years. And what we're finding with some of the consultants that are involved in that are towns with, not to say this is what Long Meadow should or shouldn't do, but towns with, that are embracing multifamily are the towns in Connecticut at least that are thriving, and the ones that are not are the ones who are failing. So it's certainly a changing landscape of, you know, with soaring real estate prices making it harder for younger professionals to buy homes, multifamily is becoming something that's seen as a positive for a lot of communities. So certainly, you know, I'm kind of those front lines, understanding what's changing and what's evolving throughout national planning and even more local planning. So I have a, my personal dynamic is I love modern architecture, but I also do historic preservation. So I kind of have both sides of the coin. So I think that makes, you know, some unique perspective to some of those challenges that every town in New England and throughout the country is really going through right now.
I'd like to hear that. That's, that's excellent because, you know, as time progresses, things change. And Long Meadow is not what it was two hundred years ago. And today we have, we face different challenges. So that's, I'm, I'm happy to hear you say that. The fact you've had, you know, a lot of experiences in other communities throughout the region. So you do have sort of a feel for what is, I want to say hip, these are where now and wasn't twenty years ago. So that was, that was a nice comment. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. It's certainly not unique to Long Meadow. Every community is going through that kind of process of identifying what's really the best setup for the next ten, fifty, twenty, hundred years, whatever period you want to put on it.
Yes, and also.
Oh, sorry.
And I'm sorry, and also I'll comment that, yes, I know, we also have a problem where we're hitting a tax threshold where now people are looking in every nook and cranny in Long Meadow to find more revenue somehow to keep us from this two and a half cap that we're going to hit. So we have to be careful between that and probably what the residents feel is the, the feel and, and love of Long Meadow. So I think you have that kind of feeling of things.
Yeah, certainly always a balancing act between all of those factors that you mentioned.
Anyone else? We're all good. Chris, thank you so much again. We'll, we're going to have our vote at the next meeting on November first, and we'll let you know.
Great. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Mr. Chair, so, yeah, so this is going to be, I think the next meeting will be November first then we should be aware of?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right. I just wanted to, can I just chime in something further up the agenda items here since I'm Chair of the Quiner Valley Planning Commission? I do want to thank you guys for utilizing the pavement management program. And I'm glad that Amir is here tonight. And again, if you guys need to reach out, remember I am an amazing resource to, to the region. And my position is chair. I don't know how long, or how many years that will last. But thank you again for having that pavement management program that you guys have taken on. And I hope you're satisfied with the results in the report tonight. And again, if you ever want to reach out to me for anything else we can do from the Planning Commission, please do.
Hi.
Thank you.
At this point, can I get a motion to adjourn for the Planning Board?
I'll make a motion to adjourn from this special joint meeting with the Select Board and Planning Board.
Can I have a second from someone?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Cheryl.
All in favor, let's go rock, I'll vote.
Sure.
How do you vote, Walter?
Yes, adjourn.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Bruce?
Bruce, he's still online?
He's muted.
Looks like he's muted.
Star six.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
Adjourned. Okay, sorry. Actually, I had also seconded the emotion, the motion, but nobody heard that. So I'll, I'll vote yes to adjourn.
And I vote yes too. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
See you watching on, on live. Take care. Bye-bye.
Okay, next up is our Board and Committee interviews. Mike, can you move Michael Massey in, please? All right, we're good to go. Hi, Michael, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you guys, okay, here we go. Got some video. How are you?
Good, good to see you. So thank you so much. Yeah, absolutely. So thank you so much for applying. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Audit Committee and the Energy and Sustainability Committees?
Sure, sure. So just a little bit of my, of my background. I have about seventeen years of experience in construction, manufacturing, and engineering. I hold a bachelor's degree from University of Connecticut in electrical engineering. Uh, I currently work at Stanley Black and Decker, uh, I'm a leader of engineering there where I manage a team of, uh, five engineers direct and then, uh, five technicians indirect. Um, so, uh, the, the reason I'm interested in the energy and sustainability committee is because it's actually, i- i- it aligns with what I do currently. Uh, we do a lot of productivity projects, uh, we do a lot of capital projects, large capital investments and everything is really based on, uh, energy consumption and, you know, trying to, uh, bring down, uh, our, our, the costing of our products. So, uh, I've been involved in, uh, many sustainable energy projects, uh, among which I did, um, for the town of Woodbridge, Connecticut, I did, uh, fuel cell, which was, uh, the, it's an island of microgrid, uh, that, that I designed with a team and we implemented for the town of Woodbridge, Connecticut. Uh, I was involved in our solar panel project, uh, our facility's in East Long Meadow, Massachusetts. Uh, we have about one point seven five megawatts of, uh, solar generation that we use in the plant. Uh, so I've been involved in that and, um, I, I work a lot with, uh, Mass Save and Rise Energy on, uh, you know, cost savings projects and i- in our manufacturing facility as well. Uh, so, um, uh, di- I've been designing machinery for, uh, probably about seven years now, uh, manufacturing equipment. And I kind of play, you know, it's like a, a, a little bit of everything role, kind of a jack of all trades, a master of none, but, um, my head is wrapped around peak savings, so I, I, I think i- in this town, we have a lot of opportunities, we have a lot of old homes here. Uh, we could, uh, there, there's a lot of things we could do just in terms of like educating the, uh, uh, the people in the area, just about certain programs that might benefit them, like insulation programs that Mass Save offers, um, uh, and, you, you know, various different things like that, so there, there, there's a lot of different routes that we could go.
Very good, very good, so, so your application indicated, um, that you were interested in the energy sustainability committee, um, but also potentially the audit committee, is that, um, are you interested in interviewing for both or is that kind of a, a one or the other?
Uh, I mean, honestly, it'd probably be, uh, a one or the other, I'm not exactly sure what all this entails on the, uh, you know, in terms of the, the hours. Um, I, I think the energy and sustainability would probably be a better fit for me as of right now. Um, but, uh, really, I mean, I, I'm just, would like to get involved in the community and, and be of service to the people here. Um, you know, my, I have two little kids, uh, one is two, one is four, they're gonna grow up in this town and I'd like them to have a nice experience. So I'd like to be able to contribute.
That's great. Um, Mark or Tom, questions? Yeah, Mark.
Yeah, I, Mr. Massey, thank you very much for applying. Uh, uh, m- my initial comment when I saw your, or thought when I saw your, uh, resume was that you'd be perfect for permanent building committee because they do have a bunch of openings there, certainly more than the audit committee, we've got all kinds of financial people around the town. Not that you would be good for the fi- the audit committee, but, um, so just thinking about that, but in terms of the energy committee, uh, the question is, have you had a chance to speak to anybody on that committee to, uh, see what it is that they do or talk about some of the projects they've been working on?
I have not, no, no. This is, I, honestly, I read, uh, you know, on the board, I just figured, uh, uh, I gotta get involved and, and just, you know, help the community in any way possible. So I have not spoke with any of them yet, but I'd be, you know, I'd be happy to do so.
Yeah, I, I, I think we can have a couple of people talk to you if you do get appointed, it'd be great because they're working on some very, very interesting issues in terms of energy sustainability. Uh, but thank you, but keep in mind, give a thought to the building committee, you know, that's a, that's my plug for Mary Beth Burge.
Do I have to apply?
You, you may have to apply, but we might just have to appoint you. Thank you, though.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
You know, wh- when I think about energy and sustainability, I also think about all the energy that it takes to, to bring things to us. You know, we're, right now, we're talking about all these, uh, things that need to be, all these containers that need to be unloaded from ships, put on trucks from California, driven across the country and all that energy, you know, goes into us, uh, everything we buy. And what do you feel about, um, you know, energy in terms of, you know, like, local, um, you know, using local stuff, but then also, uh, developing local sources of energy other than, um, solar? Is there any other things that you've thought of or?
Uh, I mean, honestly, if you look at it right now, it's a, it's, it's a very difficult question to answer. You have a few technologies out there, uh, I mean, you have solar, you have fuel cell, uh, people are working on harnessing plasma right now. Uh, if that goes through, I mean, you'd almost have a, a unlimited, unlimited sustainable energy, uh, that, that could be a pipe dream, but I think M I T's working on that as we speak. It, it's a difficult chess because like, it, so say you have a fuel cell online, like, uh, at UConn, that, that are very, it, they require a lot of maintenance, they go down quite often and, uh, while they're good, but they have long rant, ramp up times. Uh, it's a difficult, it's a difficult question to answer. I think solar right now for residential is your best bet. In terms of manufacturing, it's not really, i- it's not gonna do much for you because, so we have one point seven five megawatts on, on a good day on our manufacturing facility right now and that can power one machine. So it powers one large furnace in a five hundred thousand square foot facility. Uh, so in terms of picking up for your manufacturing, it's difficult. Residential wise, it's probably the best option that we have right now. The, the other technologies look like they might be five, ten years off before we get to them.
All right, well, thanks for attempting to answer that question and it, it's clear that you, you have a sense of what's going on in the field and I appreciate you sharing some of that.
No problem, thank you.
Anything else? Very good, so, uh, in, uh, in, uh, two weeks, November first, we'll be making our, um, making our appointment, so, um, uh, check back with us on that day and thanks again for stepping forward and have a great night.
Thank you guys so much, I appreciate it, take care.
Yep. Okay, moving right along to board and committee appointments. Looking for a motion? Muted, Mark.
Probably here today, I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, appoint.
Rose Burnell.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A three-year term, expiring six thirty twenty-four. I will second, I'll second Mark's motion.
Mike, can you call the roll, please? Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lakisa?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, looking for another motion with regard to Kimberly Barton?
Uh, will we appoint Kimberly Burton to a one-year associate term for the Conservation Commission expiring six thirty twenty twenty-two?
I'll second that.
Um, let me just go all in favor, say aye.
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 That's serious.
What, what's? Mark, when we're in, uh, z- z- remote like this, don't all votes have to be by roll call?
Um, that's a good question. We can do it by roll call, Mike, can I do roll?
I'm just, I, I just don't want anybody questioning this stuff.
Yeah, sure, that's a good point. Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lakisa?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, time for our, uh, pavement management system presentation from P V P C. You're in as a panelist? Hi, Amir, can you hear us?
Yes, hi, everybody, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Perfect.
Yeah, good to see, so, um, uh, yeah, we can, you can just launch right into your presentation if you want.
Sure, sure, um, so, once again, thanks for, uh, the invite and, uh, just wanted to thank, uh, um, Tim, I know Tim couldn't be here with us. Um, he's in the great, in Florida, I don't know if he's back or not, but, um, it's always, uh, a great thing to have, uh, the community's support and engagement. And, uh, uh, I'm happy to, to say that, uh, I had, uh, both of those, uh, throughout the whole, uh, time that it took, uh, for not only the pavement distress data to get collected, but, um, communication with the town was great. Um, we were able to work together and I know that Jeff was also involved. Uh, Mike, from time to time would come in, you know, what's going on and, uh, so, uh, I want to thank everybody for their involvement and, uh, um, this is a very, as I'm sure you understand, worthwhile, uh, study and project. Um, so, uh, I know that, uh, my understanding is, uh, the report was shared and I think you've had a chance to look at it. Uh, what I've done here, I've taken some excerpts of it, uh, some highlights of it and, uh, we can go through it, some of the findings and, um, what's going on right now in terms of existing conditions of the pavements and the roadways, um, in town and also a couple of planning scenarios that we went over, um, in the report. Uh, so I don't know if Mike, uh, was going to give me access to, I can share my screen, Mike, or if you? You're muted.
You should have access right now, but I'm not, I'm not sure if I have to do anything, then could you?
Okay, so I don't know if everybody can see my screen.
All set, I should have just given you permission.
Oh, okay, great. Perfect, so, um, like I said, this started about a year ago, um, when Tim contacted me and, uh, wanted to know what was going on and, uh, whether we can, uh, uh, go ahead and, uh, put the community under a contract to, um, collect pavement distress data for all the roadways. These are all, uh, town-accepted paved roads, uh, that we looked at. And basically, in a nutshell, what pavement management system is all about, um, is very simple. We want to get out there, we want to collect pavement distress da- data and information, uh, so that we can come up with some cost-effective strategies uh, for providing and also, uh, this is the key, we want to maintain pavements in a serviceable condition. Everybody knows, um, day by day, the pavement condition changes. Um, the kind of loads that is, uh, is, is applied to the pavement in terms of traffic volume, um, you know, the weather and, uh, the freeze and thaw and, and all, all that goes on, uh, in the region like ours. So, um, a brief, um, overview of, um, the pavement management system activity that goes on at the planning commission, uh, is twofold. One is that we are, uh, under contract every year by Mass D O T to, um, look at the federally aided roadways, the, the roads that are eligible for federal, federal money and the federal aid, these are arterials and these are collectors in the region. We have about fourteen hundred miles of those in the Pioneer Valley region, in our region, uh, consisting of the Hampton and Hampshire County. And, um, one thing that's very important for, uh, for all to, to understand, uh, and be on board is that our segmentation, roadway segmentation, uh, is based on the state road inventory file. And the state road inventory file is a massive, massive, uh, database of all roadways, um, regardless of, uh, functional class in the whole entire state. Every segment has a unique identifier that we were able to use so that we can not only connect to our G I S section for mapping purposes, uh, but also be able to speak with Mass D O T, uh, down in Boston uh, for, uh, roadway condition, uh, information sharing. Um, as far as the local, so there's regional and then there's local, uh, which, uh, Long Meadow is a part of now, I'm proud to say. Um, inform and educate, I go out there and explain what's going on with the program, uh, what are the benefits, uh, community can, can enjoy. Um, it then, as far as the community, which is again, I want to thank Long Meadow, I want to thank Tim and Jeff for their commitment here, uh, getting this started and, uh, making sure that, uh, it, 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 uh, was a hopefully a good product, informative, we know what's going on in town, uh, and then, uh, over the course of two to three years down the road, uh, we can hopefully update the data. Um, so, um, there is project ranking programming involved, we're gonna go through very quickly a couple of planning scenarios that I presented, um, what, what's gonna happen in the future if we continue to, uh, to do business as usual or if we were able to maybe bump up the money a little bit and see what kind of an effect is that, that that's gonna have on the pavement conditions. Maintaining, obtaining the, uh, pavement management system is key. Uh, this is not one of those situations where, you know, you do a report and then it's gonna collect dust and, uh, nobody's ever gonna see it again. Uh, as the chairman, if I could brag a little bit here, um, we've done this, uh, for a very long time. I got on board in nineteen ninety, um, as a, uh, I would like to say right now, a young man. Um, and anything after nineteen ninety, um, I have, I have been involved in the region and the communities, um, on board as far as local pavement management. And, um, as far as Long Meadow itself is concerned, we were able to survey nineteen miles of federally aided roads. Um, what these are, these are arterials and collectors in town, um, seventy-four miles of local roads, total of ninety-three miles. And this was, uh, checked and rechecked, um, again, I want to say, um, with cooperation with, with Tim uh, to make sure that we don't miss any, um, uh, of the segments in town, of the roadways. That can be broken down a little bit further, um, of those, um, federally aided roads, three miles of arterial, sixteen miles of collector were surveyed, um, in town, you have fifty-seven miles of, uh, residential through and seventeen miles of, uh, what we call residential dead end. Dead ends and cul-de-sac. Um, this is a part where, uh, numbers come in, formulas come in, and I don't want to bore anybody with all of that, but what the software uses is, uh, the current cost and what is good, uh, you know, uh, this is where, again, community e- involvement is key in terms of, uh, what are we talking about right now? Uh, we know that, uh, price of gas has gone up, um, quite a bit in the past seven, eight months and, uh, therefore we can expect a big spike in the, uh, price of asphalt. Uh, so all that can be adjusted down the road. Um, the functional class and usage of the road, uh, obviously in arterial roadway, it gets a lot, a lot more volume than the local road does. So the amount of, uh, you know, load that is applied to the pavement, um, is much more severe on an arterial road and collector than a local road, so, um, that is all taken into account in the, in the software program that we use. Uh, distress survey, bringing on the distresses, uh, severity and extent of them. Um, also, we get involved with local management policies, what that in a nutshell entails is that some communities, you know, it, it is, is treatment, some communities don't like to, um, crack fill, they only do crack seals. Um, so those kinds of, uh, those kind, kinds of, uh, decisions are made, obviously, uh, at the local level. Um, depending on obviously, uh, availability of materials and labor. So, uh, when you look at the region and what we've done over the past, uh, twenty-five, thirty years that have been involved in this, um, a lot of communities have been, uh, placed by yours truly and. Placed by yours truly and. So uh what we hope to be able to do is uh two, three years down the road. Uh collect more information, fresh information, and do this again.
So um um Amir, uh do you mind if um if you share your screen at this point, cuz I think these visuals are will be helpful for for um people that are.
I I thought I thought I was, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mark. Um let me see. Are you able to see now?
No. Okay, Amir, if you're having trouble with it, I I don't mind sharing it on my.
No, I think I got it.
Okay, there you go. Perfect. Thank you. Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. There you go. All right. So let's go from current slide. And this is what I was referring to in terms of uh how many communities have been involved um in pavement management with us. I wanted to um again, we um. Affirm that uh down the road, I'm hoping that we can continue this cooperation. Data needs to be, pavement distress data needs to be collected every two, three years. Um. In, if somebody asked me uh very quickly, can you explain what this whole thing is about? This is the graph I always like to uh share with them. And uh what we're trying to do is to. Prolong the life of pavement. The way you do that is uh by trying to attend to the good roads first. And keep the good roads in good condition. And this way, uh what you can do is buy time over the years that are gonna go by. Uh so um if we can get in there and as soon as a crack appears on the roadway, uh fill it. So that this prevents water from getting into the base and the subbase, um then we are prolonging the life of the pavement. Unfortunately, what happens out there um is that um these um. Less severe, if you wanna call them that, distresses that appear over time within a year. Um that the pavement uh that the roadway has been resurfaced, if we don't. They don't do that, unfortunately, it doesn't get the attention that it needs, unless the crack is really wide and now. Um you know, all the water is in the basement, as they say. So. Um quickly, um I am happy to report to you that um you are looking good in town in terms of. Um the overall condition index. Um just wanted to quickly, this is in the report, I'm I'm sure that you've uh you've looked at it. Um one hundred means that it's the roadway is perfect, uh zero means basically it's impassable. So in the system, we have these ranges that um identify good, fair, poor, uh and so on. So. Um regardless of uh the functional classification that you look at here. Uh majority of the roads are in uh fair to good condition. Uh in the report, what I'd like to do is to report on um to list, give a listing of top uh rated roadways. Um again, this is not, this is top ten. Uh you have more than ten segments that are that that uh that have OCI of a hundred, but uh. I just picked these alphabetically to show uh what's going on and uh you can see that these are all local roads. And um worst ten in terms of OCI, overall condition index, um and we're looking at some local roads. In terms of uh what we call network priority ranking in the report, uh this NPR business. Um is uh basically benefit benefit cost ratio type. Um how can we get the best, the uh you know, the the best bang for the buck? As they say. So um what the the the. Higher, I should say, the NPR is, um the more attention that roadway segment um is uh it should be given. Um so it's basically a listing that uh the town engineer, the town uh super highway, uh the uh DBW director can take that. And say, okay, now we have in front of us a listing of what should be done first, what should be done second and so on. This is by no means. Um uh is 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 a way of for us dictating what the town should be doing. So this is just a guide. Uh I would like to look at this as a guide for uh the uh local uh Department of Public Works. So sometimes, you know, you look at the very first one on the list and it requires a lot of money. It's okay to go to the second, it's okay to go to the third, and so on and so forth. And exhaust the money on average that we get every year, including chapter ninety. Um so you can see here that there's rehabilitation, rehab means usually overlaying. Um you know, one and a half inch, one inch, three inch, um and so on. Um now. Now we're getting into uh arterial collectors. So when when I, when we talk about pavement management, meaning uh attending to the good roads. And keeping the good roads good, keeping the important um uh roadways in town functioning. This is a a good example of uh what that means. So um I hardly see any local roads popping up in here. Um top, basically, twenty, fifteen, twenty um or so. Um budgeting planning, as I mentioned uh earlier, uh two planning and budgeting scenarios I'm taking a town through. Um I want to quickly talk a little bit about this second paragraph in here. Um I have three categories that I uh speak to the towns about in terms of maintenance programs. Uh regressive equilibrium and um progressive. Progressive is something that um. We don't wanna get into because um it's not really a reality. Progressive means give me all the money that I need right now so that my backlog of 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 repairs goes to zero. Uh we we all know that's not gonna happen. Every community has a backlog of repairs. Regressive is somewhere we should not be. Regressive meaning that uh. The funds that are applied for maintaining perform performing maintenance on the roadways is insufficient. Um to uh keep up with the backlog. And the backlog increases over time. Equilibrium is something that I advocate for. Uh if I can't find all the money in the world that I need to. Uh have my backlog go that goes down to z- to zero, then let me do something that at least I can try. And keep the average overall condition index about the same. Um a per year, give or take, you know, one point up and down. Um and this way, we can maybe chip away at the backlog of repairs. So um this anticipated budget is a budget where um every community basically is uh. How much money do I spend? This is what I asked Tim. I said, Tim, how much money, including chapter ninety? On average, you don't need to be that exact. Uh do you find yourself spending every year? Million dollars? Great. So let's give the million dollars to the software, let's exhaust the money. Uh based on the uh network priority ranking. So we can see that the, right now, the average overall condition index. For the town of Long Meadow, um when I say it right now, um please forgive me for saying it right now. This is about whenever the data was collected. So sixty-four, um which is uh fair to to good. Backlog of uh just over twenty-three million dollars, which is typical for a town like Long Meadow. We applied the one million dollars for five years, we did a five-year plan, and you can see. Uh that the average average OCI or overall condition index goes down, 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 that's expected. The uh backlog is increasing um year by year and at the end of the fifth year, thirty-six and a half. So then I said, okay, um let's put this aside, let's go in here. And let's see if we can come up with some kind of a uh plan scenario that we can try to. Try to maintain the average OCI level. The fifth first year, I bumped it to a million and a half. The average OCI uh went down still by one point, meaning what? Meaning that that extra half a million dollars. Um wasn't enough because the backlog is so much um to um, you know, go up to seventies and eights, obviously. The backlog went down. Next year, million three, to two years after that, million one. And you can see the over- overall condition index level is still going down. But I am keeping the backlog the fifth year. My goal was the fifth year backlog should be less than what we started with. And you can see that that's going on um by um about. Uh let's see, um thirty-four million here, if we go up to the uh. Budget thirty-six. So but the fifth year backlog uh with the maintain uh scenario is about two and a half million dollars. If you look at these, uh the decrease in the average OCI level as anticipated versus. Um I'm sorry, versus the uh maintain, uh still going down, but a little bit better. Now, um I I often get asked as to, you're calling this thing a maintain average OCI. But you're letting it slide. The reason I'm letting it slide is because we don't wanna get crazy with the money. We want this increase in the in the dollar amount per year to be something that um hopefully the town can manage. Of course, I can come in here and put in ten million dollars the first year, but we don't have it. Uh and show everybody a nice, you know, seventies and eighties uh OCI level. But we know that that's uh not realistic and uh. Um you know, we have a reputation to to uphold. Um so um that was. Um if we can do this, this is my my calling this is a chip away at the backlog. End of the fifth year, if we continue doing this. Um but again, um you know, I. I agree that the money is going up, um and we have to find this little bit, you know, more money every year um somehow. Um but if that was going to be something that could be manageable, then hopefully the chip away at the backlog can be managed. So this uh this last uh page of this uh presentation, uh looking at the fifth year OCI value. The fifth year backlog of these two plans, uh we have spent a million one. Extra at the um, you know, end of the the plan year, the fifth year. The average OCI is up by three. And the backlog is down by two and a half, almost a million dollars. So um. That is uh I I believe the maintain, um the budget to 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 try to uh keep the average OCI level about the same. Would be something that uh I would advocate for for the town um as we move forward. So. Um I'm sorry, it was a lot of information here condensed. Um I'm happy to answer any questions you may have tonight. And then, like I said, this is a cooperative uh effort. Um every time something gets paved, I'd like to talk to Tim about maybe. Uh coming there and, you know, trying to um update the um, you know, segment by segment as we can. But again, every two years, two, three years, um this should be uh done again.
Thank you, Amir. That was really helpful, um sobering but but helpful. Uh any uh questions, uh yeah, Tom?
Yeah, um Amir, thanks for this presentation.
Sure.
Question is, when you look at the difference between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-five. Do you calculate in the increasing costs for roadwork? Um is that part of this formula?
There, yes, thank you. Great question, great question. There is uh in the system, there is an inflation rate. Uh that is used in there, and that can be changed, obviously. Um you know, the. Where we're going now, um you know, into the future, who knows what's gonna happen, but there is that um. Inflation rate and the system knows to uh deteriorate actually the uh the pavement condition. Year by year by year. So when we say, you know, do a, you know, do a bud- budget, when it does a budget two years down the road. It is allowing for uh pavement deterioration as well.
Okay, thank you.
Curve, sure. The curve that you saw, um every roadway uh with respect to. Functional classification deteriorates over time um in a little bit of a different manner. And those uh variation curves are in the software as well.
Okay. Now, the other thing in your charts here, you showed from years twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five. But what is, what's been, can you remind me what our funding has been like the last five years?
Uh I can tell you, Tom, it's been four hundred thousand, four hundred sixty-five thousand to four hundred eighty-five thousand. And chapter ninety money at between four hundred and four hundred fifty thousand dollars and supplemental funds that we put in. So. We've been, you know, under a mi- like nine hundred thousand dollars kind of numbers for the last. At least five years. And and that additional four hundred fifty thousand we put in was all the result of Richard Foster pushing hard to. Supplement the chapter ninety money for the fifteen years prior to that, the only money we spent was chapter ninety, and that was generally in the four hundred. Four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar range at that time.
Okay, thank you, Mark. All right. I'm sure you have some more questions, Mark. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I I mean, you're thanks for this presentation, I, you know, Richard Foster done a lot of. Agonizing over this in the past. My biggest concern is that that I don't know where we're gonna get a uh e- extra half a million dollars to go from. Million to a million and a half. And so the question is, A, there are two questions. One is, you know, if we can't do that, you know. Does your system truly prioritize the roads in a small town like Long Meadow? And B, you know, how do we stand relative to the rest of the state? You know, you can read that, you know, the legislature's been pushing the governor. To significantly increase chapter ninety funding for all the communities. So, you know, I've been reading about Springfield, who's, you know. Hundreds of millions now. So, you know, it's it's terrible to say, oh, we're no worse than the other guys, but how are we relative to the other guys?
Uh like I mentioned, I um relative in size uh to Long Meadow, Long Meadow is doing pretty good. In terms of where you are, uh your average uh condition index is uh. You know, fair to good, and uh that is not what I'm seeing in certain other communities. And uh in terms of how much money. Um you know, that one million dollars that that I was I was given um is pretty good chunk of money. Uh for a town um like Long Meadow, because what I, when I compare. In the money, for example, uh you know, I I don't wanna, I don't wanna bring other monies into this uh in terms of other communities, but. Um you know, towns such as Ludlow, for example, um that I'm involved with right now. Um you know, compared to Long Meadow, um town of Wilbraham, for example. Um that one million dollars is a pretty good chunk of money that's being used right now. Now, let me please also mention. Um I have worked with other communities that have been very creative in how they do. Um this kind of business in terms of bringing a little bit more money and supplementing the chapter nine. Um grants, different types of grants, um they're always out there looking for them. Um right now, I think you're in a better position to share this information with me than I am. But I know that uh over the past year and a half, year and eight months, nine months. Ever since we had this uh pandemic, um a lot of money, a lot of money. Have been coming in through state, to the localities, in different forms, shapes. Different names, to be honest with you. Um this grant, that grant. Um, this grant, that grant, um, so. I think it's an opportunity to um go grab some of the money. And I, you know, I've been talking to a few communities about that, that that be on the lookout. Um, you could say the grant is for this and that, but grant doesn't say that that money can't be coming in and. Um, you know, be used for uh trying to maintain our roadways. Um, so. Uh, I think right now and and there's more to come, I if if this Congress has its way. Um, there will be a lot more money. Um, this is printed money, in my opinion, but but that, you know, my opinion doesn't matter here. Um, but but it's it's out there, it really is out there. So, um, you're right. Where are we gonna get another half a million dollars right away on that year one? Now, please, uh, this this also, let me emphasize that. Um, this is a trial and error that we uh that I that I engage myself in with the software. Uh, who's to say I can go in there and put a million three, a million two, and then you notice that at the fourth year and the fifth year. I believe the third year and the fourth year, I only opted by a thou- hundred thousand dollars. So, um, you wanna see what goes on. You wanna see if I if I up it by two hundred thousand, what is the O C I like? And then maybe as the fourth year, we up it a little bit more. So it's a trial and error. Um, please don't go with that half a million dollars that you saw in that first year. That can change, that can very easily change, so.
Thank you. I I just have one other question that that, you know, you you separated out what I guess I'll call main arteries from the regu- regular roads. We've taken the approach in the town, at least recently, that the main arteries, we're gonna wait for tip money from the state and only deal with the this. You know, the rest of the roads on our own. Does your, can your software system separate out those so that when we. Look at where we spend our money, we don't spend it on the the roads where tip money's available?
Yes, yes, to answer your question is yes, um, there is a way to go in and um. Exclude certain roadways and certain segments from budgeting and planning.
I think that would be very helpful for us, for us to take a look at, cause I think what we'll see is either a bigger impact or, you know.
Interesting, interesting, you you bring up the tip. Um, we all know that um it's a very lengthy process. So I have found over the years that uh a lot of the communities in our region. Um, spend local money on roadways that are uh federally uh federally eligible. And when I ask them, why, why are you doing this? Um, the one answer is, it takes too long. It takes too long for the planning, the planning process for the tip, um, they don't wanna wait, and that's what they're doing. So, uh, I agree with you, that should be part of the, now, one of the first things I asked Tim, I said, Tim, you know, in the past. Um, Long Meadow um has been maintaining Route Five, is that still the case? And he told me, yes. So, I don't know when, maybe decades ago, um, Long Meadow. Made a deal with Mass D O T that, hey, you know, we'll 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 take care of this. And uh, um, I see it quite often, actually, Long Meadow is not the only one, where state numbered route. To me, state numbered route should be state. And the local community should take the money and spend it somewhere else in terms of maintaining other roads, but but that's just my opinion. But that agreement basically has gone into effect decades ago. And uh, so that's something that we could have done. We could have taken, you know, Route Five, all of Route Five out of the equation. And say, okay, now let's spend it somewhere else, but um, Long Meadow maintains Route Five. So we had to keep it going. But to answer your question, I'm sorry, it was a long answer, but the answer is yes. Certain lo- roadways and segments can be excluded from planning and budget.
Thank you. Yeah, Tom.
Yes, Tom.
Amir, I um, I'm I'm kinda glad you brought up Route Five. Because we had a bit of a struggle, you know, that a few years ago, we looked for a hundred thousand dollars. To start planning work on that so we could get state money. And uh, the first time, you know, it didn't pass. Um, and then it did pass last year, and the first item on our warrant this year is it's for another chunk of money. To to do that. So, you know, we really do need community support to get that money, so you're you're right. It it almost is easier to just do, spend it yourself, but uh over over time. You know, you just can't keep up with it for the role like um Route Five, because like this year, we had dug up pretty bad.
No, you you're right, Tom, but so I I wanna echo what Walter said before he left, um. He is, he's not, he's not kidding. He's he's a very, he's a great asset that Long Meadow has. As far as uh the connection that he creates between uh people like me. The rest of the staff at the Planning Commission and the town of Long Meadow. Uh, it goes a long way when you have somebody from the town. That shares your commission. Um, it's a, it's a big deal to me. Um, so I think. Um, using him, uh, getting resources from him, uh, getting information from him, uh, is key. We also have, as you know, um, every second Wednesday, our joint transportation community meets. Um, it's been like this, but it's okay, it's still a meeting, uh, to come in, get information. Um, and uh, over the years, I have found that the more vocal you are, the more you show up. Um, the more, the more movement your project seems to. To to get in 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 the tip process. So, um, i- it is what it is, you know, it it takes time. Uh, if we're willing to wait, that's a good resource, obviously, and they play, Mass D O T pays for all the design as well. So, you know.
And and Walter Gunn has made it very clear to the select board and and folks in town, you know, that he can't. Make anything happen for us, but if we have a project that's ready to go. Then we stand a much better chance, you know, and so that's what we've been trying to do.
Yes, yes, yes.
Very, very good. Uh, Mark or Tom, anything else? Awesome. Thank you so much, Amir, again. Uh, this is really helpful. This is kind of the first time I've I've really digested all that information. It's it's sobering. You know, when when uh, yeah, we.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. Again, I I I I really am very uh happy and glad. Uh, sometimes I work with communities and, um, you know, it it could go better. Um, more involvement, more commitment would be always, you know, nicer. But uh, as far as uh my experience with working with Tim, um, it's been great, and I think uh. Like I said, uh, let's keep it going and uh let's keep chipping away at this backlog.
Terrific. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, next up is resident comments. Do we have anyone looking to make a comment tonight?
Yes, I'm gonna move Frank Smith in now.
Hey Frank, you're muted and uh we can't, we can't see you yet.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
We can hear and see you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Frank Smith. I live at twenty Green Willow Drive in Long Meadow. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm appearing before you this evening to speak about the efficacy of heat pumps in our climate region. I'm motivated to speak to you because I believe some outdated information may have been shared. In this forum during a previous meeting. I'm speaking to you as one who holds a master's degree uh in science from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. And uh, I'm also the former vice president of operations for a Cape Cod based energy design and installation firm. Which was named number one solar installer uh in the state of Massachusetts by Boston Magazine in twenty fourteen. As a member of the Board of Trustees and head of the Building Committee of my. Hundred and seventy-five-year-old church on Cape Cod, I led the effort to design and implement a state-of-the-art. Forced hot air and air conditioning upgrade for the facility in twenty fifteen. We eliminated four gas-fired forced hot air furnaces and replaced them with combination. Air conditioning heat pumps powered by a five-point-seven. Uh, kilowatt solar array that we owned, that we put on the church. The Massachusetts Clean Energy Center showcases the success of heat pumps on its website. And specifically, when Mass Save launched their incentive program, they discouraged the removal of the backup systems due to the concerns. About customer comfort during the coldest days of the year. They have since removed that language. After seeing how effective cold climate heat pumps work as a standalone system. Again, as you can go to the Mass Clean Energy Center website and read case studies about the successes. I would urge you to do this, rather than rely on long outdated information. You may have heard about heat pumps not being effective in cold climates. I'm here to bear witness that you are, they are a good investment because they work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else?
I don't see anyone else in there right now with their hands raised.
Okay. Uh, next up is select board comments. Anything for Mark or Tom? Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I just have a comment. The um, you know, this meeting. You know, we have two select board members who weren't able to make it tonight for some pretty um important reasons, that's for sure. And uh, I wish them both well with their challenges. Um, not to worry anyone in the audience, I'm sure they're fine. Sure hope they are gonna uh deal with these issues. But, you know, the fact that I happen to be in Rhode Island. And I could do this on Zoom is a real advantage. And I know that, you know, we've um. You know, we've continued to do it on Zoom much longer than most people thought we would. But in this case, it's really worked out to an advantage, and and I guess in the future, it might be really beneficial to the select board to be able to have. Some members of the board participate through Zoom. Um, because, you know, this, tonight's meeting probably would have had been canceled, and we would have had all this business to catch up on. And we would have had meetings that went till like ten thirty, eleven o'clock for, you know, three weeks, I'm sure, or three different sessions. So, uh, you know, I I'm just saying, it's it's a big advantage and um. You know, we'll have to figure out how we can incorporate Zoom into our future meetings without having. Um, difficulty from the governor or whatever, so that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Mark.
Yeah, thank you. I I'm just gonna quickly comment that our previous speaker, Mr. Uh, Smith from Green Willow. Commented, I think the his uh comments referred to something I had said earlier, so I appreciate his update and uh thank him for his contributions.
Okay, good. Um, very good. Uh, next up is Lynn's Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. Uh, so for a COVID nineteen update, as of the writing of this memo, which was Thursday. We had fifteen COVID cases, and of those fifteen, eighty percent were breakthrough. Uh, today's numbers were uh much more positive. We had twelve cases. I don't have the um breakthrough stat though on that, but we are seeing the numbers. Slowly decline, um, so that's, that's hopeful. And I think, um, not yet, uh, road resurfacing project. Uh, so the road resurfacing work that was planned for this fall uh was aborted to Palmer Paving. They were sele- the selected contractor. Unfortunately, supply chain delays uh in catch basins, granite curbing and other materials have held the project up. And it will not be uh started or completed this fall. Palmer Paving has agreed to hold the pricing. And there's an attached memo to my report that I won't go into detail on, but if you do wanna see it, it is, it is linked on to the agenda. Uh, from the D P W director that identifies the roadways and explains uh in much greater detail the reason for the delay. So as soon as we have a start date in the springtime, I will bring that back to board. Um, but this will also have an impact on Wolf Swamp Field's parking area. Uh, the parking area there is planned to be completed with millings from the road resurfacing projects as a way to save money. Uh, this is not going to be done this fall, uh, because we won't have millings from those road projects. We're storing some there from the Pondside Road project, but it won't be enough to do the entire parking area. Uh, this is not gonna hold up construction at Wolf Swamp Field because it's already not slated to be completed until the fall of twenty twenty-two. But the parking area won't be started until the springtime as well. Uh, sidewalk projects that were funded through the F Y twenty-two capital improvement program in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars have been completed. Uh, there's a few sections that need to finish up in the next few weeks, but overall, the bulk of the work is done. Uh, the majority of the work included new sidewalks and ramps along Wynona Road, Wynona Place, Woolworth, Benedict, Windsor. George Washington and Longfellow. There was also a lot of spot repair work that was done, including portions of Severn. Durham, Farmington Road, Ducksbury, Redfern, Avondale, Wolf Swamp, Fairway, Shaker, and at the corner at the Community House. Uh, new crosswalk and sidewalk ramps were installed at the intersection of Laurel and Farmington, which is a pretty busy area to cross for uh Bliss and Laurel Parks. And work has, was also done along Maple Road, particularly at sidewalk access ramps to address issues with respect to. The Americans with Disabilities Act. Most of this work, again, um, has already been completed, and then there's a few other areas on Maple and George Washington that. Need to be done in the next couple of weeks. Uh, earlier in select board announcements, uh, Mark mentioned about the flat project on Pondside Road. That did start last week with some erosion control measure, measures being put down on Thursday. And it's going to expand from there. They're going to start with the parking area across the tracks before moving to Pondside Road. Pondside's going to be closed right after the recycling center, all the way to Tina Lane while this work is done. Uh, the leaf drop-off area will be slightly impacted in that you'll need to access West Road from Dunn Road. So we're putting up signage uh to direct um vehicles that way. And Turner Park Dam improvements, a contract was awarded in the amount of fifty-seven thousand dollars to Mass West Construction for improvements to Turner Park Dam. Which includes clearing and grubbing, installation of riprap, uh, slope protection. And construction of a dense graded stone walking path and uh low man seat. The work is starting soon and will reach substantial completion by November twenty-ninth. And one thing that was not on my written report, but I did wanna make sure I noted it here. Um, I know that uh the Town Manager's Office, as well as I think many select board members, have been receiving calls and complaints from residents. Regarding delays in trash pickup from waste management. We are very aware of what's happening. Uh, myself and the D P W director met with waste management officials last week. And are working out uh exactly what's causing some of their delays. Some of it is related to staffing issues. They've had a lot of turnover, like most of the industries that we're seeing, including some very long-tenured. Drivers that were very familiar with Long Meadow. Uh, and so they're they're being impacted by the labor shortage and trying to get people trained up. And familiar with the town, that's causing delays. And some of the other delays are also related to. Most of us uh now shopping online and we're doing the right thing by recycling a lot of that cardboard boxes that come to our house. Unfortunately, some of the boxes aren't being broken down to the size that they're supposed to be, so it's taking waste management longer to load that material into the truck. Which then slows the route down even more. Uh, so it's a little bit on us and it's a little bit on them, and we are working that out. Certainly, the communication needs to be improved. Um, we did receive notice Friday night after. Um, all staff had gone for the day to an unmonitored email address about the delay for Friday's pickup. We're working on making sure that they get that message to someone any time of day so we can get that update out to all the residents. And that was all I had for an update tonight.
Very good. Uh, do you guys have any questions from Lynn?
I did have something, let me just. And I think it had to do with. Oh, Parks and Rec. Um, so they are now, they're seeding the the field at Parks and Rec. Um, according to this report, and um. And so that seems like a good, it seems like the timing is pretty good on that. Are are people ha- are, you know, your overall view of Parks and Rec's. View of the project, do they feel it's on schedule and are they happy with uh how it's going?
Yes, yep, so far on. Yes. Yep. So far on schedule.
Yeah, we get a lot of rain. Okay, I think, oh, oh, yeah, that was the main thing. The only other thing is in terms of the, uh, you know, they talked about the daycare and extended day enrollments. And, um, so that, those numbers, I, I wasn't quite sure how to follow that grid. But the, actually, the daycare folks have not started yet? Are they gonna start? Cause you were still hiring staff, correct?
Daycare started on October fourth. That is going well. Um, the school age, uh, before and after school program is getting started and they're hoping that that will um, start by the end of this month. They did make some key staffing hires in the last two weeks.
Okay, so the, but the numbers, the, and the report just aren't up to what's really going on, I guess.
Yeah, I think that might have been a September report.
Oh, yes, it is a September report. That would explain it. Okay. Um, but you know, have you, I, it's probably hard for you to even know how many children are in the, are they at full capacity yet or are they just easing into it?
Uh, I don't believe they're at full capacity, but I don't have the numbers in front of me. I could bring that to your next meeting.
Oh, that'd be great. Yeah. Wow, thank you. That's all I had.
Sorry. Moving on down to old business. Uh, looking for a motion to approve the minutes from September twentieth.
I'll move we approve the minutes of the September twentieth meeting.
A second.
Uh, Mike, can we get a roll on that, please? Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. LaCusa?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next up is the Fall Town Meeting warrant. We devote to sign the twenty twenty-one special Fall Town Meeting warrant and set the location of the meeting.
Thank you. So you have not um, closed the warrant yet. So I do have a few items that I wanted to um, adjust. One is um, a consent agenda. Articles two through four, ten through twelve and fifteen through nineteen. That was just the suggestion. I don't know if any of you have looked through it and, and thought about that. Do you want me to keep going? That was all I had for consent agenda. I can keep going on the other edits.
I mean, I think that, you know, we've had good luck with those in the past. Uh, people, if they really want to discuss a certain issue, they do put their hands up and, and we vote on it separately. So I have no problem with that. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
Yeah, I agree. You can keep going, Lynn.
Okay, thanks. Um, so there was a suggestion uh, to add in Article Six, add to the explanation, uh, the total amount of FY twenty-one ambulance revenue. Um, someone that had read the draft had thought that might be helpful to uh, residents that are looking at it. I can certainly, um, certainly make that an amendment if you feel it's important. If not, um, we could leave it off. Um, and then Article Seven is one that I do need to amend, uh, or need to ask that you amend it. Um, so Article Seven is regarding the legal fees. I, in the last week, I reached out to um, Attorney Quinn, who's representing us in the DPW matters and um, Attorney Canoff regarding the gas matter that we've been discussing with him. Um, and I have estimates from both for the remainder of the fiscal year, which brings our total um, legal uh, supplement up to three hundred thousand instead of the two hundred thousand initially. I did amend the explanation to add more detail. And I can read that to you tonight if you want to hear that. Um, but it does explain the, uh, the difference between the two, the two items and the possibility that we can recover some of the costs for the DPW matter if we're successful.
So do we need to, um, when, when we vote to amend, do we vote to amend the article and the description or just the article? The language of the article itself. And the only reason I'm asking is that, um, the, the draft warrant that, that we're looking at that was included in the, in the packet, that does not have the updated descriptions in it, right?
Correct. Yep. This happened late this afternoon. Um, and I don't believe you need to vote on the description. But I did want to point out that it would be a change from what you had seen.
Okay. Mark, I would, I would suggest that she, you're right, we don't have to vote on the descriptions. That's just narrative. The issue we have is, for example, Article Seven. Tonight's, you know, agenda showed Article Seven with two hundred thousand dollars and I'm, you know, it's not my decision, but is that a, is three hundred thousand a substantial change and does that represent something that we quote unquote didn't advertise to show at tonight's, or voted tonight's meeting? For example, had that been there, would people have come in to give us their opinion of it? And that's always the issue with making changes like, like that in, in the, in the warrant article. It's a, it's a tough call. The good news is ultimately the town people who don't like it or are concerned can go to town meeting and just vote at it, vote about it, but it's not, it, it's not what was presented.
Yeah, Mark, uh, or, yes, I, I agree, Mark Gold. I think that, you know, we really do need to have some due process here. We have to have uh, some input because it's a hundred thousand dollars. It's a, it's a big jump. Uh, I think one thing to keep in perspective is that these, hopefully both of these situations um, will be resolved in the year, you know, that, um, and is that something that we're hearing from lawyers? Could both of these things, you know, be non-existent a, a year from now then?
Uh, not likely.
Not likely. No.
Lynn, Lynn, the other issue is, well, first of all, Article Seven, it says no recommended. It should be not recommended.
I, I, I want to finish my question. Sorry, Mr. Gold. Yeah. Uh, so, okay, so that's, I guess one thing is, do we have, because I know legal affairs, you know, can take a long time. Do they have an idea of how many years some of these cases may go? Will they both be several years or will one be several? Or do you have any idea?
Uh, the DPW matter could be um, a couple of years. The gas matter, it's, it's hard to say, um, but it could be sixteen months.
Okay, so we're gonna look at money from this, well, this budget and the following. Okay. Uh, the other thing is in terms of Article Six, um, yeah, I think it's, if, it sounds like if the fire chief is, is supportive of that, putting that figure in there, um, you know, right, might really soften the blow, uh, so to speak. You know, I, I know that we have had situations in the past where people have objected to, um, you know, certain, you know, uh, certain warrant articles that had to do with people's uh, payment and collective bargaining, uh, but more individuals. So, um, I would like to suggest, you know, I would think that we could do that with Article Six. Put that fund in there just to decrease the chance that there be someone making a, a different argument on town floor like we've seen in the past sometimes. Uh, I'm done now. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah.
Mark, you have something else? I'm sorry.
I, 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 I just don't know what we do with Article Seven. Article Six, all we're changing is the description. I'm fine with changing the description. I think more description is always better than less. So, you know, because it moves us through the, the town meeting quicker.
So it seems to me that we could, um, we could have like a, a quick special meeting to have a vote on Article Seven with sufficient notice?
So what I've been told is that this, the warrant is a draft and, and it's subject to change up until you vote on it to close it. Um, so this is a, the article itself is the same. The dollar amount is different. And then it triggers a change to Art- Article Thirteen, which would need to decrease by that hundred thousand dollar amount in order to add it to Article Seven. Um, and then what I think, um, Mark Gold was asking was about the, um, not recommended by the finance committee. So the, there was no recommendation made because the vote failed. So there, there was not a, a yes vote or a no vote. It, it, it failed. So that's why it says no recommendation.
Then, then they didn't fulfill their obligation under the charter. Their, their obligation is to make a recommendation on each financial article to town meeting. I mean, I, obviously, I'm, I'm not arguing with you. It's, it, they're, they have an obligation to either recommend the town meeting vote for or vote against it. I, I don't understand. I, I wasn't at the meeting, but did they have a vote?
And that may happen. Um, I was not at the meeting either and, um, I do have the finance director on the call who was there if you want information from her. But what was relayed to me was that they were looking for more information about the two cases and about the breakdown between the two.
So they didn't take a vote, is what you're saying?
They did vote and it was a split vote, three, three.
Oh, well, three, three means it doesn't pass.
Right. So there was no recommendation. I, I don't.
Actually, the, the, the actual wording is it was not recommended by the finance committee. I mean, there's a, there must be a motion. I moved that we recommend Article Seven. The vote was three, three, so the mo- motion didn't pass.
Uh, I'm not entirely sure what their motion was. I can ask, um, Jennifer to unmute if, if she recalls what that motion was.
I mean, I think we need to get that clarified before we put it on there because there's a lot of people in town meeting who look at finance committees recommend, either that or we ask them to make a recommendation on the floor of the town meeting and then we should write that in there, that recommendations be made on the floor of the town meeting.
Um, I could speak if.
Yeah, please, please.
Um, they did vote, they did the, um, they did recommend to um, do the transfer and, or they did vote to uh, do the transfer and it was three, three. Someone was missing from the finance committee meeting that night. And so, um, it was a no vote as clarified by the, I believe, the town moderator. We, they went forward saying that it was not recommended and it was clarified by the town moderator that it was because it was a tie vote, it doesn't, it's not supposed to say not recommended. It's supposed to say um, no recommendation.
The town moderator is here as well and I, I just moved her in if, um, you did want her to address that.
Please.
Hello, uh, thank you for this. When I saw that the, uh, draft warrant contained, um, not, initially contained not recommended, three, three split vote, I asked for clarification from the chair of the finance committee who said that the three, three vote is a fail for the motion. The motion is, there is, it, there's no action that's been taken. So if, if the motion had been to not recommend Article Seven, and it had a majority vote in favor of that, then they could say that this has not been recommended. But simply because an affirmative motion, a motion to approve it, um, resulted in a tie vote, there's no action. So they, they technically took no action on this. And that's why I suggested that the, the phrase no recommendation be put in there. I asked the, uh, finance committee chair if, if he would have another meeting, uh, so that the seventh member could be present and he declined.
Is it, is it possible or appropriate to just put a little note in there indicating that there was, it was a split vote by the finance committee?
It will, I mean, it, you're, you're free to do what you want on that, but it's, there's been no action that's been taken. So it's not a recommendation. It's not, there's no, there's no action that's been taken. They, they took a three, three vote on a motion and nothing happened.
But Rebecca, doesn't the, doesn't the town charter require that the finance committee make a recommendation to town meeting on all finance articles?
Yes.
So, so where does that leave us? I mean, I, I, I'm, and I understand you're in the same spot we are, but, but you know, isn't there an ob, don't they have an obligation to do some, to have another meeting or vote at the town floor or something like that?
I clarified with the finance committee very specifically of that there are options to have meetings. Um, and the finance committee chair said that we voted, we're done, we're not meeting again. I don't know what to tell you, Mark.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it's not, not something you did. I get it.
Yeah, I, I think that like, um, Mark Strange is suggesting, you know, putting something in the description. It would say that there was a three, three, was a title on if this should be uh, recommended or not recommended. Might help people who are, uh, gonna vote on this issue. You can add that to the description. Uh, Lynn, did you have an opinion on something like that?
Uh, no, I'm in the same boat as Rebecca. I'm getting most of, yeah, I'm, no, I don't.
They said that they would, or he said that he, they would have another meeting if something new came up. Uh, so barring anything new coming up, there will not be another meeting.
Not, not the news coming up. I mean, we know that. Could, since, since we out, out the right descriptions, is this part of the description that we can just ask that, you know, is, we're voting on, on articles. Just say the, the finance committee voted three to three about, on, on a decision whether to adopt this or not, whatever they, their motion was. I'm not trying to skew the data. I'm just trying to put the information out there.
Yeah, because it's really equal support for both sides of the argument.
This makes it sound like it didn't come before the finance committee.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
But, you know, of note, the, the three, three vote was on a motion based on the draft warrant. It wasn't based on the, to, to my knowledge, it wasn't based on the new description, if you add a new description. Yeah, am I correct in that? Uh, I believe Jennifer was there?
Um, yes. So that, that's what I was, um, going to ask be recommended, that the new information is a description that Lynn was, um, waiting for clarification from the, from the lawyers on how much would be for the annual cost. So it was pretty vague what was in there initially. Um, so they had questions on how much, um, each project would cost and, and for how long that duration would be. And, um, at that time, we didn't have that information. So I think having some more clarification will probably give you potentially a better vote.
Could we ask that they take them, that they make a motion on the floor? Does that ever happen?
All the time. They, they not make a motion, but what they've done in the past many times is they, they meet ten minutes before the, the town meeting, take another vote and then announce on the town meeting floor, we just voted whatever. That's why I'm saying. And, and when that happens, the description in the warrant says recommendation to be made on the floor of the town meeting. Now, again, it could be three to three, but frankly, I'd like to put them on the spot because they're the ones who are of the obligation to put, to make a recommenda, I mean, you know, I, I don't want to sound crass here, but the finance committee doesn't have a whole lot to do other than to, you know, one of their critical factors is to make a recommendation to town meeting about financial articles on the warrant. And, and I think they ought to do it one way or the other. And I, I'd like to see them support these things, but you know, whatever they've done, they've got to do it.
Yeah, so, but Mark Gold, that if they, at town meeting, if, if they get up and say, we had a, a motion on this article and it ended up being a split vote, three people for it, three people against it, and that's our position.
Then that's, that's fine, Tom, with me. That's fine. But let them announce that town meeting floor. Because the way it means it right now, it's like they didn't do anything.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see that they would have a big problem with that. Um, you know, they always report their work. Every year they report what they do and they obviously did something. Uh, so, um, yeah, that would be the best way to handle it, given the things they, where they are, unless like you said. Um, yeah, that would be the best way to handle it, given the things they, where they are, unless, like you say, there's. A change that they would be willing to reconsider at a future vote, but if there's no change, then that's what they should report, that'd be great.
But that that's why my point was, I don't think we're allowed to say no recommendation. You know, they're, they need to make a recommendation, even if their recommendation is we were split.
So, um, I I I do think that they that they need to to meet again and vote. Particularly considering the amount is also changing. Um, I hate to, you know, put that, make make more work for them and and create another meeting, but like Mark said, maybe they can meet. You know, a little bit before town meeting. Um, my question is, when does, when when is their drop dead date for for getting this finalized?
Uh, you need to close the warrant tonight, it needs to be posted tomorrow, uh, and.
But they can meet, they can meet literally ten, they can meet it, if the town meeting is seven, they can meet at six fifty. They've done that, Mark, many times, you know, not this group of, the finance committee has done that many times. Rebecca, you're shaking your head because you've seen them doing it, right?
Yeah, Jennifer.
Um, I can tell you that that discussion did happen in the meeting and um, they said that if they need to, they'll meet. Right before town meeting and they also said that they would um, be able to vote and um, describe why they voted the way they they would.
I I think that's great, I don't, you know, I'm not looking for them to definitively say what, they just got to say something. Because town meeting expects them to make a recommendation. And I I was just caught by this no recommendation, that's why I, you know, I I think it needs to say recommendation to be made on the town. On the floor of the town. That's been our pa- practice and I think that's what our, what our charter says, that. The finance committee will make a recommendation, even if it's, even if it's, we're split.
Yeah, Rebecca.
I I appreciate you letting me participate here, the um. The difficulty is a three, three vote is not a recommendation, and so. Because i- if you do change the article amount and the description. You're changing the article, that's something new that they would, that would have to go before the finance committee. And so you'd get that recommendation, but because they had said that they weren't. They they, they didn't say leave recommendation to be made on the floor.
Rebecca, if I could just answer that.
Can't really be put in there.
Well, maybe, maybe that's an even better reason to say to recommendation to be made on the town, if we change the amount. It's not the, it's not the article they voted on and therefore there is no, no comment about that article. And so because we can still change it, we changed the amount, we literally forced them to make the vote before the town meeting. And and the current comment is null and void, if you will.
So it it sounds like, it sounds like, um, and correct me if I'm wrong. Tonight, we can vote to to amend Article Seven to increase the amount and um, allow Lynn to make adjustments to the description. And then request the finance committee to vote on that article, on that amendment, uh, for that article before town meeting. Is that accurate?
That sounds good, and and I think that, you know, the select board really has no, no way. Of influencing how much money is spent, I mean, the town manager decides. How much legal costs are going to be based on the best estimates of uh, conditions, you know, that are developing. In in our, in our legal battles, and so, you know, we need to, you know, I have no problem. You know, voting and approving the the different number tonight, uh, because it's going to go before the town anyways, the only thing is. I would worry if the town voted down, you know, what we would do. Uh, because we'd have to wait quite a long time to get that money funded in a, in a fall town meeting. And so I wonder if we should look at a number that would be. You know, more likely pat to pass, I don't know if we've ever had. Numbers this high before, Mark Gold, you would have a better idea of knowing if we've had legal fees this high in the past.
Not that I recall, but it it, you know, I may not be recalling properly, but we haven't had this many legal actions going on in the past. You know, I mean, it, we're in, we're in a unique situation, you know, we've got a bunch of legal things going on and and frankly. You know, if it, if it doesn't pass, it's it's like, what happens if the budget doesn't pass? You know, you go back and you figure it out, I mean, you know, theoretically, the select would say, town chose not to fund it. You know, we're withdrawing from our our such and such a legal action, you know? Because it wasn't, I wasn't going to mention it, but, you know, because it's, if you don't have the money, you can't do it. And 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 that's the only. Control that the town has over some of these things, I guess.
Right, and and I I agree, these are sort of town-driven initiatives that, you know, that the voters, you know. Pretty much chose to to build on that spot, the DPW. There were other locations, that's the location they chose and and so that led to some legal issues for us. And I think folks similar feel the pipeline is an issue that. Um, residents oppose and they want to spend money on that, and so, you know, our job is to let the residents make those decisions. Um, because it's a democracy.
Uh, so so it, um, just to to bring my thought full circle, so. Where it says no recommendation by the, by the finance committee would. Um, what would we change, do we have to change that, and if we have to change it, what will we change it to?
Mark, I was, I was suggesting that if we change the amount, we just change it to recommendation to be made on the floor of the town meeting.
That makes sense to me.
It's an article that they did not consider at their last meeting.
Yeah, that makes sense. I'm sorry, I'm missing something. Okay, so, um, can we?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we. That we al- alter Article Seven to increase the amount of money as as recommended by the town manager. Hundred thousand dollars, but because of that change, we will need to. Change the statement about this, the finance committee's recommendation. And allow them to recommend it on the town meeting floor, because we do not have time to go back to their. Uh, to have them call a meeting before this needs to go to the publisher.
Got all that, Mike? We got a second?
I'm good.
And I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, Mike, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
And and then we're gonna change the descri- add to this description of Article Six?
Yes.
Uh, the only, I have a question about the the consent agendas. Do those need to be put in the warrant in advance? They, sometimes they are, sometimes they're not. Just your star often takes it upon himself to put them together, we can do that? If we, if we choose to, Rebecca, what do you say? You're the moderator.
The only caution that I would, I would put is is that. Uh, I would like to get confirmation that a particular way of making a motion would be acceptable. Um, because the articles contain numeric amounts, dollar amounts. And they include the language. Um. It is, uh, or take any other action relative thereto. The motion should be read with that specific number in there. Um, and I would like to get clarification from town council that a motion to move articles X, Y, and Z. As printed in the warrant, except for the words, or take any other action relative thereto. If that's permitted, then you can have them in a consent agenda, if he doesn't permit that, then we can't have them in the consent agenda. It's a little complicated, and because of that complication, and you have to vote on it now. I would say don't print them in the warrant, but indicate that consent agendas may be possible.
Uh, Rebecca, I'd agree with you, just just as a clarification. The actual motion will never say or take any other action relative thereto, the actual motion says, you know. There's a period before that, that phrase, and so, you know, I'm good with writing in there, it's the intent of this, of the. Select board or whatever to offer articles two, three, and four as a consent agenda, and then. Article ten, you put it's the intent of the select board to offer articles ten, eleven, and twelve as a consent, that. Just put that sentence in there, that gives us the option to do it, but doesn't put it in the warrant, just as a consent agenda.
I mean, it is, it's up to you, you can phrase it how you like, but the the uh, typically the motion for consent agenda is that I move. Articles two, three, and four as printed in the warrant. And so, because it's the the warrant article. Has that language in it, that wiggle room language. It's typically not permitted. So I wa- I want to get some clarification on that in terms of when I'll, when I, whether I'd allow it at town meeting. So, but if the motion could include. Move the articles as uh, printed in the warrant, except for those. Particular words, then I think we're fine, but I want to get that confirmation from council.
You know, for the, for the few articles we're talking about here, we just as easily just whip through them as three separate articles, I, you know. We're gonna agonize over, let's just do it.
Um, and lastly, I have um, the location, which is probably one of the most important pieces of this. So I can update you, um, the recommendation is the DPW garage. Uh, we do have permission to use the parking lot across the street and we do have some very preliminary weather. Outlooks for two weeks away. Um, we're not predicting any major snow or ice storms in the days leading up to or the day right after. Uh, so we do look okay at this point, uh, to continue with the DPW garage.
Lynn, I I know I wasn't on the planning group here, but do we, because. It's after daylight savings time changes, do we intend to have lighting on the street to cross that street between the. Parking lot across the street and the DPW, it gets dark and it's a curved area there at night. I just rec- you know, it's it's got nothing to do with approving the warrant, but I think that's a potential. Issue with it being very dark there, people coming from the Springfield side can be flying down that curve.
Yes, uh, it, so fortunately, it's actually the right before daylight savings time. Uh, but it doesn't, it'll still be dark, because by seven P M, it's it's still getting pretty dark. Uh, but yes, we will have accessory lighting leading the pathway to the DPW garage. Additionally, we'll have a police detail outside of the driveway entrance to cross people from the parking area to the DPW.
Right. It's gonna be dark in when we, when we end, unless we end.
Alright, so I'd like to make a motion to close the warrant with the uh, additional changes that we've discussed this evening.
Second. Uh, Mike, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Now, we also need a motion to set the location, correct?
Yeah.
In time.
In time, okay.
And so I make a motion to uh, have the location as GPW garage, seven P M. Um, is that all we need?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mike, call roll, please.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Very good, thank you Rebecca and thank you Jennifer, appreciate it. Okay, so is that, is that all for the, for the warrant? Uh, next up is the discussion on the tax ceiling task force. Um, so, you know, we just wanted to put this back on the agenda. And make sure it doesn't, you know, continue to fall through the cracks. Um, because it's, obviously, it hasn't gone, gone away, it's not going to go away. Um, we couldn't remember where we had left off, uh, I know we had brought this up at a relatively recent, uh, previous meeting. But I couldn't remember where we left off with it. Yeah, Mark.
Let me just unmute myself, so there, there's, there's a meeting scheduled for Oc- Thursday, October twenty eighth. Uh, it's, it's gonna be a combination of Zoom and or in the meeting room at the high school. And the issue right now is who's still on the, who's still qualified to be on the task force and who's not. I've sent out emails, most of, you know, a lot of people said, yes, I'm still interested, I'm still on it. Uh, we do need a new representative from the school committee, so we're working on that, but there will be a meeting and we're gonna just try to get going again.
Perfect, I I didn't, I didn't know any of that, so I'm I'm very happy to hear that. Um. Did you have any, Tom, you have any questions about that?
No.
So, yeah, can you just give us an update, once you guys have had that meeting and let us know, you know, what what came out of it?
Sure, absolutely, if you want to schedule something for the fourth, you should be ready for the, for the meeting on the fourth.
The first?
First, first, whatever. Yeah, we should be okay.
Yeah, it sounds good. Perfect. Uh, next up, uh, in new business is the Eastern Hamden Shared Health Services.
Thank you, um, so I do also have with me tonight Eric Weiss from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Who has been instrumental in getting us to this point, so if you um, would uh, favor it, I would move Eric in. Um, so, I was late getting the uh, intermunicipal agreement updated to the website today. Partly because I was waiting for the Munson Board of Health to vote tonight, I wanted to make sure that there were no additional changes before I shared the copy with you. And I'm happy to report that the Munson Board of Health did vote to endorse this intermunicipal agreement tonight. That was the last group before it comes to you. So Hamden voted, Wilbraham's voted, Munson's voted, and now it's back here in Long Meadow. Uh, just to remind you, we are the host community. Supplying shared health services to Hamden, Wilbraham, and Munson. And, um, I can have Eric pick up from there if you'd like to just talk about the process that we've led. Since um, roughly February.
Good evening, um, I know I've talked to this group at least once before, so I don't want to be too redundant in what I've gone over. But the idea here is we have a really well-shaped, now it's been through the hands of at least four different lawyers. Um, agreement, and basically, the the this, the basic concept is that Long Meadow, and thank you for doing this. Stepped up as the lead community and therefore, um. Finn would become, is the director of the the regional shared group, and has a really awful name of the Eastern Hamden Shared Public Health Services. And a really bad acronym to go with that, but that's just the way it is. Um, so the idea here is what you know, um, any employees that are picked up by the shares, health services. Um, are actually employees of the town of Long Meadow. And we've made sure that there are compensations built into the agreement to cover both the short and long-term costs of Long Meadow on that. Lynn was very upfront about the fact that we have to make sure we take care of all costs. Um, the department is described in section six, and I won't go into a lot of the detail, but it basically says that there's um. Regular meetings of the boards of health and that there's gonna be. Uh, the creation of a sort of shared health committee that watch, looks over. Comprised of select board members, board of health members from the various towns. And the reason I say it that way is in at least two of the towns, the board of selectmen is the board of health, so there's a, a cross over there. Um, there is a prescribed po- budget process, and there's a prescribed um, host community role as well. Um, so those things are are well ironed out in the agreement. Budget process parallels the municipal budget process, they need to come in early with their numbers. And and then the, one of the key factors that, I'm taking a quick aside here, um, in the, in the whole thing is that. As you know, um, because of Lynn's proactive effort, a DPH grant was awarded with um, East Long. With Long Meadow as the lead community, and that is worth three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to the effort this year. And two hundred eighty-seven dollars, eighty-seven thousand dollars in year two and year three. And basically, that supports the salaries of the new positions that are being created as part of the shared arrangements. And none of the towns are gonna see increased costs this year, next year, maybe by the time we get to year three, there may be some in. Costs that need to be shared as this whole thing develops, but the whole point here is that there's time for the communities to prepare. And and also there's times for the efficiencies to line up to decide what stays and what um, is be, needs to become more efficient by and between the towns. Um, there is a um, frame. Um, there is a um framework for a um budget. I mean, for a assessment budget, meaning and it's based on population alone, Long Meadow being the largest. Wilbraham being second largest, though it's broken down by population, which creates percent share. And then from there, um, in the appendices is a proposed budget if it's only the amount of the. Grant that gets replaced in funding of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred, that's also in there. There are provisions for withdrawal um and termination of any community that chooses to do it. Um, I certainly don't recommend that. There is a process for adding new members if that ever comes up. And then there's some boilerplate stuff with regards to indemnification and assignment and everything else, so. This agreement has been um reviewed and 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 deciphered by many. Um, this board should certainly take a good look at it because you're the ultimate responsible party when it comes to approving contracts and arrangements like this for the towns. Um, I obviously have put a lot of time into this. I think that we have a good, strong agreement. I think that. Um, Long Meadow is the appropriate lead town um with its strength and 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 clarity in terms of uh um. Who has what responsibilities? I really have a lot of optimism for Finn. I think that you picked a good one there in terms of somebody to lead. Um, because he's open to new ideas, and I think that's gonna be important in how this gets developed. Um, and I also think that um we have an agreement that has the ability for any town to pull out, and it's a ten-year agreement, which is even better. Because it doesn't say that everything is set in stone. It really allows for the provision of revisiting and improving. And that's why we started with the name, and this is where I'll finish up, shared public health services. It could evolve into something more. But we didn't start out right out with the idea of creating some sort of district or agency or whatever you want to call it. We started out with something. A little softer, a little more malleable, that the towns can take time to get used to each other, because there's obviously a wide range of. Um, interest at the community level um on how this goes. So I'm not sure what else the board wants me to explain. I urge you to make sure you read through it. Um, I urge you to pass it, uh, not just as soon as you can, but when you're comfortable passing it. Because the next big step, and this is where I will close, is we're gonna create the governing document, the bylaws for that shared group. You know, chair, vice chair, how many representatives from each town, those kinds of things. Um, so that they can monitor the efforts of the shared health arrangement. It's a good deal. We've got a lot of state support. The state is looking to support shared arrangements right now. And this is as about as in public health shared arrangements, this is about as cutting edges as there is in terms of an effort to be tried.
Thank you, Eric. Yeah, Tom, do you have a question? You're on mute.
Uh, doing this for ten years, is that the state's recommendations for this, or was there some other factors involved in why it would be ten years? Oh, no, um, in in when you create an I M A between communities, you're allowed to go up to twenty-five years if you want to. And that was a strong recommendation from a couple of the towns was they didn't feel comfortable with that number. So the idea was, okay, let's create an agreement, an intermunicipal agreement that has ten-year lifespan. It forces everybody to revisit it in ten years. I know it probably isn't this board, but it would require a subsequent board to do that. And also with the permission of the towns to be able to pull out, it's not like you're stuck with it for ten years. If a town so chooses to pull out, they can. Um, but ten years, I think, is a healthy amount than creating just this standing. Or sitting arrangement that it becomes way too static and tells us to assume they have to be part of it. It will force an issue in ten years for the towns to take a good look at it and say, do we want to keep going with this thing? And what are we gonna do with it? Alright, and as far as uh grants from the state. Um, right now, there's no end in sight. We don't have to worry yet. I mean, with that. Oh, is that your question? Right now, things look good for the next two years, three years, if you include this year. A grant program is a three-year grant program. Right, and then would in three years from now, would there be any additional funds, you think? Um, well, first I'll say your guess is as good as mine, depending on where we are financially. And secondly, DPH. Lynn's been on a number of the set of the webinars, is making it a priority to fund the regional stuff, so. Um, the regional efforts are where they're trying to make sure that things happen properly, so. Right, and with situations like the COVID um pandemic, would that. Increase our chances of funding in the future being regional? Yes, there's no doubt that access to new grant programs as they come up or other grant programs as they're created are are. Better with the regional arrangement than without. Okay, thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Yeah, Mark.
Uh, Tom, I have two things to say to you. Quinn bill and regional school busing, if you think this, if you think the state's gonna continue to pay for this. Those are two things they were gonna pay for forever and they stopped. But Eric, thanks for your presentation. I did. Remember the last one. I have a couple of questions. I don't know if it's Lynn or you need to answer them, but. One of the comments you said is we're making sure that we're accounting for short and long-term costs of these employees, and I guess the question is, Lynn, how are we. Going to do that? Maybe, you know, you're you know, you haven't decided, and are we gonna literally break our our health department budget? You know, more detail out of the our annual town budget, because right now. All employee benefits are literally lumped into a a single system. They're not by by department. And so is that gonna be a change to the health department so that we do separate the account for. Whether it's retirement benefits or healthcare benefits or whatever that is? That's my first of several questions.
Alright, so we're going to treat that as a assessment uh to each community. Um, and we'll treat the benefits similar to how we treat them in the those in that are paid by ambulance revenue or any of the indirect costs for. The water and sewer enterprise funds, so it's the same. We have a calculation for what health insurance um and retirement.
Will that be included in a budget for the for the health department? In other words, right now, if you look at our budget, you know, for example, you look at the parks and rec department. None of the benefits for those employees are in the parks and rec department budget. They're all in that very bottom line called employee benefits. But I would assume that for for the healthcare health department, we're going to have to include line items for. Those employee benefits separate from that big or or not. That's my question. Are we gonna separate them out within that health health department budget so we can go to these. Partners in in the Eastern Hampton County Healthcare System and say, here's the total cost of running. That department that's being distributed by the formula that that we've all agreed to.
Yeah, I think the answer to that is yes and no. Uh, we'll certainly have to give them a detailed budget, whether or not that. Line is included in the health department budget on the town of Long Meadows budget. We haven't decided that yet.
Okay, fine. Uh, the the other question is, is how do we address this? Somewhat in some towns, very different disparate. Uh, responsibilities of the health department. You know, for example, the town of East Long Meadow, I know they trash collections under the health department. Is someone's gonna continue to be under that health department, which is now gonna be under our health department, which is. Now, Long Meadow doesn't, our trash is under the DP doc. For example, that's one kind of example. How are you, how's that gonna be addressed?
I'll probably ask Eric to speak to that, because he's been the one going to all of the various communities and talking about this very question that everyone's asking.
Oh, sure, give me the tough question.
No one wants to lose their individuality.
Yeah, nobody, that's that's where I was gonna start. None of the towns want to lose their individuality. There is full recognition on behalf of all of the towns. That there are differences between and part of the um local responsibility, like with the local coordinator or local clerk for the health department. And the and the local responsibility is gonna be to define that. And I do know from many years of experience um how much different the system in Long Meadow is. And in some other towns in terms of how it's divided up. So that has been discussed and accounted for by the communities. And the idea here, that's one of the reasons why it was called the Shared Public Health Service, is because we're defining. Those services which will be shared, and if it's not being defined within the agreement. Um, it's not something that the towns are planning on sharing at this point. It's something they could share at a later date, there's no doubt. But we're saying now, these are the services that will be shared.
So are you saying that that trash collection's not a shared service? What, excuse me?
At this time, it is not. It's not in the agreement as a shared service.
So in other words, under this system, East Long Meadow is gonna have to find another place for their trash collection to sit.
East Long Meadow's not a a member community, so.
Okay, but.
Yeah. But that was, you're right, Mark, because that that was actually one of the major discussion points when we were discussing things with Long Meadow and East Long Meadow a few years back. That was a major discussion point of how to how to handle that, so.
Okay, and my final question i- is, you know, the the distribution of cost is by population. And yet, different communities have different amounts of, I'll say, burden on the health department when you look at. The number of swimming pools to inspect, or the number of restaurants to inspect, or the num- you know, that kind of stuff. Why was it done on population and rather than on historical some formulation based on. The amount of work that's actually there to be be done based on these these inspections? I mean, if you have fifty restaurants versus two restaurants, I would see you're doing twice as many inspections in the in the area with fifty restaurants.
It was it was felt very much by the committee that the best reflection of the relative size differentials between the communities and the relative difference in workloads was. Very much akin to population in terms of the types of services that were being provided. And the shared services that were being provided, so it was a mutual decision amongst the communities. Um, there it you the there were um, there were a couple of suggestions to go other routes, but it first of all, it got very complicated very quickly. And second of all, they didn't seem to be accurately reflecting the load. Healthcare or the health services he needs um is very much a function of the size of the population.
But so it's not the function of you've got Boston Road going through Wilbraham and you don't have a and and you've got Route Five going through Long Meadow with different number of. Right, that that didn't, I mean, Lynn, Lynn, you were probably in on the discussions, is that that didn't enter into the discussion at all?
We did talk about um just the inspection load, uh, which is only a frac- only a piece of um of the health. Shared health. Um, there's also Title V, there's, as you referenced, pools, there's camps. Each community, you know, had pluses and minuses in each area, and as Eric pointed out, it did get really complicated. So population, at least for these four communities, seemed to make the most sense to go with. That's not to say that in the future, if we added another community where population skewed at all, we may have to take another look at it, but for right now. These four that we have, this is what's making the most sense.
And and is there a provision for looking at that in the future? I didn't see.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to jump.
No, I was just gonna say for, you know. You know, through, if the city of Springfield wanted to join this, for example. I mean, was is there a provision, though, for looking at the 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 next distribution?
There's a contract opener in there that allows the communities, that says by agreement, if all parties agree, they can do X, right?
Thank you.
And just um for, I guess, point of clarification, I'm not asking you to vote on this tonight. You've just seen it. I want you to sit with it, review it. And then I'll bring this back to you at your November first meeting. We can have another discussion and or if you're comfortable, we could vote on it that time.
And and Lynn, when would this take effect? Immediately or not till the next fiscal year?
Um, we were working on a date. It was depending on when all the communities voted, uh, but it would likely happen um by November fifteenth. Assuming that you voted November first, some sometime in that timeframe.
Right.
Thank you.
And on the good news side of things, to totally break with um what's going on at the meeting tonight, the Red Sox hit a grand slam. They're up six, nothing, so.
You sure you're not looking at last, the uh the last game?
No, it was um Schwarber hit us hit a grand slam, so.
Eric, thank you so much. Anybody else, anybody else have anything else for Eric? Thank you so much. Good to see you.
Have a good night, you guys. Take care. See you, Lynn.
Okay, on to the DCR Urban and Community Forestry Challenge Grant Program.
Thank you. So I do have Assistant Town Manager Corinne Mycie-Munz here. She has been working very hard on all things grants related, and this letter is one that she can speak to tonight.
Very good. Hey, Corinne.
Hi, hi, everyone. Um, so uh, as I think Lynn was just saying while I was rejoining as a panelist, um, this is a letter of support. For the DCR Urban and Community Forestry Grant Program. Um, the application is due November first, and the town is applying for twenty thousand dollars, which is the cap. Um, that we can apply for to help cover the cost of a um tree risk assessment. Uh, updates to our tree inventory, our street tree inventory, and then a follow-up prioritize maintenance plan. For um the trees that have been identified as high to mid priority, uh, I believe. Um, in regards to their um hazard risk status. So um I you probably have all read this letter um before the meeting tonight, but just generally. Um, it voices the the select board's support for the application. Give some context for the importance of the street trees to the town and character of Long Meadow. Um, general, there we are looking for two other letters of support, um, one from the DPW and one from the Tree Committee. And those outline more specific details about what those two parties will provide for the grant. This one is, as you saw, I'm sure, just general letter of support, um, not requiring any action on uh the select board's side.
Thank you. Yeah, Mark.
Corinne, I just, I I think it's great. You should go for everything we have. The the only question I have, and maybe this is for Lynn more than you, but. But is, you know, do we have the resources to actually appropriately and effectively spend this these funds? It's a nice way of saying, you know, do we have the staff, the DPW, whoever it is to do it?
So, uh.
And I'm gonna apply any, I'm gonna vote to accept it.
Okay, great. Yeah, I did. You're you're making me realize I did leave out an essential component here, which is that we're applying for twenty thousand dollars. Um, and that twenty thousand dollars would be to hire a certified arborist or arboricultural consultant to complete the work. So actually, DPW staff will not be involved, um, except for project oversight, and I'm sure there will be some initial. Um, project kickoff period where they introduce the consultants to the community. Um, you know, go through the existing inventory data fields, et cetera. Um, but I think otherwise, um, it should be pretty, we'll we'll we will go with a um. Arboricultural consultant that is tree risk assessment, uh, has tree risk assessment qualification, so they'll be very familiar with how to do this work. Um, so I don't think it will take much DPW staff time. Um, the other thing I should have mentioned is that we did get a quote back, uh, just end of the day Friday. Um, from Davy Resource Group, which is a, if you're not familiar with them, they're a major um tree. Uh, player um in the state and the region. Um, and they have done, uh, in my capacity at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, um, I have seen many communities work with them and have very good experiences. Um, I I imagine, I imagine that they might be the only ones to bid on this project if it goes out to bid. I'm working with Chad right now to determine if it has to go to bid. Um, all of this to say that their quote came back at uh forty-three, uh, forty thousand three hundred dollars. Um, which is what we expected, and this is a fifty-fifty match grant, so DCR provides up to twenty thousand dollars. And then we have to match that amount anyway, either via in-kind or cash. So because um Davy Tree Group's quote came back at forty thousand dollars, it's it's exactly in line with um. How much money we thought we would have to spend uh on this, so we're essentially getting it half paid for by the state.
Does the other half come out of the forestry line of our budget?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, Tom. You're muted.
Uh, I I like this one sentence in the in the uh letter. It talks about the trees of Long Meadows being a key component of the town's infrastructure. Um, and and, you know, I I people don't always think of it as infrastructure, but. Uh, the the trees really, I you could just continue that to say that the trees really contribute to maintaining home values. Because there are a lot of people who walk walk in this town or drive in this town and see these beautiful old sugar maples. And just say, wow, this is a great place to be. We have folks who. Yeah, I I see the buses that get off on in Enfield and drive down Route Five. To look at our town and look at the trees, and then they get back on, and then they go up to Vermont to see the rest, you know, to see what's going on there. Um, but yeah, our trees are a real asset, and I support this letter.
Great. Yeah, I I um included that line in there, I, you know, kind of to show DCR um that we are looking at. I I think it's almost every community, as I'm sure you're aware, uh, at least in our region, definitely across the state. And probably the whole country, you know, that that struggles to fund their um forestry program. Um, I think many people reckon, or many professionals at least, recognize the value of um. Public tree canopy and public trees. Um, but it it it's just underfunded with all the other infrastructure needs that there are, so this was sort of a nod to DCR to show. That while, you know, while we do need to apply for assistance to completing a maintenance plan, doing this type of work, we do consider this to be. An important asset to the town. It's not just a nice feature that we have. Um, and so the uh prioritized maintenance plan will, um, to your point, Mark. Um, and so the uh prioritized maintenance plan will, um to your point, Mark, um help the DPW with its limited resources and limited staffing to help identify what are the, what are the most impactful proactive measures we can take rather than only responding to emergencies, which is what tends to happen when staffing is so low, right? So how do we avoid those emergencies a- at the very least? And then, once we have higher levels of staffing, we we have kept some budget. You know, how do we start to move into some of the um next step priorities? So um, and that's certainly the uh that that's certainly the lens at which uh through which I look at um community forestry too, Tom, so I'm glad to hear. That rings a bell.
Okay. Mark, you want a motion?
Please.
I'll move that we accept and and i- issue the letter to DCR grant for uh the Forestry Challenge Grant.
A second motion.
Any further discussion? Mike, can you call roll, please?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lakisa?
Yes.
Perfect. Corinne, thank you so much. Good to see you.
Yeah, great. So I'll just say one, uh, the, as I said, the grant applications do November first. So, Mark, I guess I'll send you a, oh, do you um do an electronic signature? Or how would you prefer to receive it, PDF or Word or?
Um, either, yeah, wha- whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, and I I could also stop and sign it um as well, wherever, or if you want.
Okay, we'll work it out. Thanks, everyone. Bye.
Thank you. Okay.
You want, you want, you want a mo- couple of motions on liquor licenses?
Yeah, I do.
Fine, I'll move we approve the one day liquor license for the uh adult center fundraising program. For, there's three of them, for November fourth, November ninth, and November tenth. As as submitted, as revised, submitted to the slip.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Did you want to say something, Mary Beth?
Um, as long as we're keeping score tonight, I just want to mention that Wilbraham tonight, just past their uh senior center, five sixty-three to forty-nine at their town meeting, their special town meeting tonight, so. Um, and they started the work on their adult center before we did, well over eight years ago. So we're ahead of the curve, I guess.
Nice work.
It is.
I'm sure it's giving out scores tonight.
Uh, Mike, can we call roll, please?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lakisa?
Yes.
Easy breezy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Okay, last but not least, the Town of Long Meadow Twenty Twenty Reprecinct Plan.
Hey, thank you. Um, this is a standard thing done every ten years, every time you do a census. Uh, the legal boundary description was computer generated and um minor changes were made. We gained uh sixty-nine residents over the twenty-ten census. The early numbers in July of twenty-twenty-one were showing us a loss of a hundred and fifty-four. But uh we were able to make up some, and now the final numbers are in. And the precinct lines have been drawn to represent an equal number of residents per precinct as much as possible based on those census numbers. And the select board would need to vote to approve the map by October thirty-first.
I got a question. Uh, when those numbers go up to sixty-nine, does that include, um, you know, anyone, including children?
Yep, every, every individual town.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, Mark.
Uh, Lynn, is the, the process include notifying people who move from one precinct to another somehow? Are people just going to sh- you know, I mean, we only have one voting place, so this isn't like uh the city of Chicago. Everybody's going to show up, just going to get in the wrong line and told, no, you're over in precinct B instead of C or whatever. But do they get notified some other way? I mean, for for us, this is a pretty minor issue, but you do.
Yes, they will. Any any voter that's had their precinct changed will receive a letter in the mail from the town clerk.
Great. Thank you. I'll make a motion. We accept the precinct redistricting based on the recommend, uh, not the recommendation, based on the findings from the submitted by the town clerk.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Mike, roll call, please.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lakisa?
Yes.
Excellent, excellent. I believe we're at the end of this agenda.
I'll make a motion to uh to end the meeting.
Second. Mike?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Li, Mr. Uh, excuse me, Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lakisa?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for participating. Thank you, everyone who was watching tonight or watching uh on on Facebook or or YouTube. And I will see you in a couple of weeks. Good night.
Night.